He's back draining the swamp, helping drain the swamp. I asked him, he took his excavator back there and he said no. I would imagine he'll have quite a mouthful to talk about, yeah. He usually does when he comes, yeah. Well, yeah, I'm gonna tell you, he gets to, that being a member of NACO and stuff has put him in a position where he gets to, he gets to talk to a lot of commissioners from throughout the United States, not just our own state commissioners, yeah. And he gets exposed to a whole-
And he exposes us?
Yeah, he does, yeah, he does, and to a whole myriad of that west, that WIR, that western interstate region is another, he, uh, he gets to take- commissions and yeah, that's, that's good for us. Morning, John?
Good morning.
How are you? I'm good, I'm good. He's in Washington, yeah, he's, he's gone today. He was in abstentia, he's back there draining the swamp, helping Donald drain. Yeah, I tell you, yeah, he's the right guy for that job, yeah, he sure is, yeah. He's the right guy for that.
We got an email from somebody, you know, that several, certain selected people got invited to go to the White House. And he said Arizona, I think Arizona, California, and Colorado.
Really?
So, just the three states.
Maybe he'll get a shot at that.
So, he was gonna definitely go. I think he said, I think he told me Arizona, California, and Colorado got invited to come, the NACO representatives to the White House.
To go to the White House, well, good.
He was pretty excited, he says, but I don't know if they'll let me in, he did something, he was riding his bike or something, got into some stickers or-
Oh, yeah, he told me, he sent me an email, he cracked up, I'm sure, out there, jipped and ran into a, into a, some kind of a shrub, a bush out there-
Something that just-
Uh, yeah. It looked like you've been in a fight and lost.
For a mountain lion or something and wasn't paying attention or wrecked, I just laughed, I didn't see him, but-
I'll tell you, I didn't either, he just told me, he sent me a text and told me that he, he was in bad shape. I tell you, that, I tell you, that damn mountain biking's gonna, you need to kidding.
He just strode the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you and welcome everybody.
Well, Commissioner Lambert, I have reviewed the amendments from our email from Kim and found them to be in order with our last meeting, didn't find anything out of order with them. So, I'll make a motion to approve the proceedings of the Board of County Commissioners for February twenty-six, twenty-eighteen.
I'll second, and move in second to approve the amendments and proceedings for the Board of County Commissioners for February twenty-six, two thousand and eighteen, all in favor?
Aye.
I have an easy transfer order. This is, we received the check from the town of Dolores to help with the purchase of a new vehicle. Part of what we were talking about last week with that vehicle and getting charged the mileage rate and all that kind of stuff. That vehicle's probably gonna, by the time they put the radios and all this stuff in it, it's gonna be another sixty-eight thousand dollars. So, this money needed to go into the fleet fund and the treasurer says it was written to the sheriff, so she can't put it into the fleet fund. So, she's gonna put it in the general fund, so we have to have an order to move it to the fleet fund. So, that's what that's about.
I would move that the order number five dash twenty-eighteen, the transfer of thirty-five thousand dollars from the general fund to the fleet fund for purchase of a new vehicle be approved.
Second, it's been moved in second to approve the order number five dash twenty-eighteen to transfer thirty-five thousand dollars from the general fund to the fleet fund for purchase of a new vehicle for the sheriff to come.
And I can't get my dates right, that should be March fifth.
Instead of February fifth, yes, it should.
I did all run last week, so-
This is right.
Oh, that one's right, okay, okay, good.
Our order's right.
Good.
You're only trying to mislead the public, we're okay.
It's March, today is March.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm Shirley Wright with the Monzuma School District. And we're here to ask for our kids a little bit of extra. We, at this point, spent eighty-six thousand dollars just since January on school safety. We have school safe radios, we have tamper resistant windows, we have cameras, uh, and we have intercom systems put in, but we don't have resource officers. And we're out of money. The city is giving us two resource officers for the high school, well, Jerry Sam and Vern Rucker. But PB and Louis Ariola are big, big concerns. We've got kids out there, the response time is horrible. We need somebody out there, and so we're asking if you can help us support a resource officer.
Well, and commissioners, hi.
Good morning there.
Dan Porter, yes. This is a preliminary, we want to bring it in front of you, idea.
Right.
Even if we could station some officers out there, but talking to your sheriff, and I see, he says, we need all our guys on the street. And so, we can understand that. But we are spending a significant amount of money, the reason the Aztec shooter is only, the only reason he got only two students is because every one of their teachers had radios, the janitor saw what was happening and just called a lockdown on radios. So, we just bought another hundred and fifty school safe radios for our teachers, that cost us-
So, we have it in every hand, every custodian, every teacher, every secretary's hand.
So, so that's the money we're spending. And I also read the papers and I know how bad the county's taking it as far as money. I know you guys are in similar situation, but we feel like it wouldn't, it's our due diligence to come ask everybody we can to keep our kids safe. And we've got two resource officers that are spread between all of our schools. They're routinely responding to different threats and we do have quite a few threats, you'd be surprised.
When you talk to the sheriff, he has a resource officer in the Dolores schools, is that correct? The sheriff does that, and I know it's because Dolores is his, has, I don't know if he, if it's feasible for him to rotate that officer maybe from, maybe not every day in, in the same school every day, but rotate him out to a different school maybe?
Well, and one of the things that we've talked about too with him is that anything that we do, we do not want it to be a pattern. It has to be just as it will, because once you figure out the pattern, then somebody can do something. We, we're, and we're doing a public survey right now, what do the parents want us to have? Where do, where do, where do we lack in it? And it's actually, do they want guns in the school? Do they want more resource officers? What do we need to do to protect our kids? Now then, our kids brought up something, and this is what they've asked us at our last safety meeting, which we have once, once a month. They requested that we have a full-time resource officer in the high, this is high school kids, a full-time resource officer in the high school, that they go through more emergency training, that they actually have an active shooter training in the school.
This is the kids we're talking about, they'd like to go through the training.
And then they're wanting to use their name tags as an identification to come and go into the school and then rearrange our commons area to be more protective. So, our kids are thinking about this and they're scared. I'm hearing kids come up to me and say, we're scared.
So, so let me tell you just real quick, all of our schools have buzz indoors at this point. Manos, anyway, there's a lot of information I, I don't want to just share with everybody, but we have buzz indoors. We do have impact resistant glass shielding on a lot of stuff. We've got radios and we've got cameras in our buildings, even the preschools, so. So, we're really going all out to make these things as safe as we can, and as you know, how do you think of everything that could happen? And I want to give your sheriff some kudos, they do have that sheriff officer, sheriff officer will come through, here's, I'm the sheriff that belongs out here. If you need me, you call me, but their response time still can be up to twenty minutes. Cortez officers can get there in eleven, of course, the sheriff has such a big area to cover.
Cortez could get to Louis.
Cortez, Diane Fox did a run out there one time, she's like, I can make it in eleven minutes. So, eleven minutes is a hell of a long time, and as you know, our community out there is very protective and we'd probably have a bunch of volunteer firefighters out there with rifles before we'd have anybody else. But then you don't know who the shooter is. Anyway, those are our concerns, we, we are just, just, again, we know where your budgets are, but if you have any opportunity to just be thinking about what to do with the schools, because we are working hand in hand with the sheriff and the police department and we're going everywhere we can.
He told us that his budget was way tight, but if we could just have somebody, for two resource officers just to help us, well, you know, half and half, something like that to, to get them out there.
You know, you mentioned this just a moment ago about having guns in the schools. The elementary schools like Pleasant View, Louis Ariola, and those elementary schools. Have you thought of having, asking for any of your teachers or principals to volunteer to take a training and become their, become their own security officer in the school and have them-
We have a survey out now that we're asking them if they want to do that. We have thrown out to them that maybe a retired police officer or a retired vet could do it. The training is going to be approximately ten thousand dollars and a week long.
And that's almost a yearly, and that's almost a yearly training. Ten thousand is about another six thousand a year roughly to go through your training.
Just to-
Just to keep up your licensure and-
And to be able, and that's per person, so to do that.
You gotta pay them a buck so that they're a paid employee.
You know, and Louis Ariola and Pleasant View, I mean, we have active parents that will do anything. But our concern is that we are still responsible for those kids and we've got to give them every means of protection that we can.
So, that's it?
That, that's our plea, so I would appreciate it if you would really think about it and let us know. Thank you.
We sure will.
Appreciate your time. And the gallery's time.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Is there anyone else? Okay, we'll close the public comment session, ready for the road department.
Morning, Rob, how are you?
Good, you?
Tom? How are you?
Not good.
Are they thick?
I hope so. We had a safety meeting this morning and the big topic of the meeting was actually the fatality with the Seagot employee. He was struck and hit by a car while doing puddles over near Pagosa.
Oh, really? I hadn't heard of that.
Yeah, it was very sad, and then he lived for nine days and finally succumbed to his injuries. And they had to escort him home, what was it, last week, and brought him back to Pagosa to bury him. Fourteen-year veteran, and was just passing puddles when they distracted driver, struck him while he was alongside his vehicle, so. Yeah, it's a tough road.
Distracted driving, man.
Yeah, yeah, so that's, that's what we discussed at the safety meeting this morning, that was a big topic of conversation. Along with the time change coming up this week, it's dark when we start again, it's cold and it's icy, and it's icy spots, it slips and falls. We had a nice, a good safety meeting this morning, so, good mass safety meeting, so, we got that done, so. The schedule, again, reads similar to what we've been doing. Cortez district is very much into Road L thirty-two and P, we're about two miles to go. So, we will certainly wrap this up within the schedule here, if it doesn't, snow's out for some reason. Yeah. I hope it snows, yeah. So, the shouldering is completed up there, so now it's just a gravel spread operation and some of these safety issues we've had on that road. We have had the sheriff department help us with traffic up there. It was very fast, very dangerous, and they had given some tickets. My kudos go to the sheriff department for stepping up and helping, they put a big signs up, we've got everything we can do. And it just, these people just don't care, and that's just all it matters to them. Seagot's employees won't do a one, show you through that, yeah, so.
Well, I had one up flip right over through my fence. Same, same, same deal, yeah. Straight piece of road, no ice, no snow, no nothing, distracted driving, crazy.
It is crazy, so we're being very careful there, but the road is moving along very well. And so, like I said, we've got about two miles left to do on that, and then we'll go over and hit a couple of miles of road over on Road thirty-three, north and south of thirty-three. We've got those ready to go, so that's where that crew will hit. The Mankas crew, Avery Oll helping Dolores last week with Road twenty-five. But we met this morning and they're probably gonna start doing some tree trimming this week, also some reblading. A lot of their roads are starting to get dry enough now where we can go blade them without making a mess up there, in this time. So, we've got one of their blades in the shop, we got the transmission rebuilt, so hopefully we'll have it out in about eight days here. That'll give them back to business with the walking roll, and that's kind of what we've been holding back, we didn't want to blade without the walking roll.
That wasn't one of our John Deere friends.
No, no, it was one of our friends. Had a transmission issue, we had to rebuild it, yeah. Dolores, they finished Road twenty-five last week, the shouldering part of it, but they're doing some culver extensions this week, getting all that wrapped up. But they're ready to go with their grinder, and they're also working on grinding and chipping Road thirty-two, not grinding, but chipping trees and brush on Road thirty-two at hour. That'll be their next gravel project. Roundup, working on Road W, they got a lot of the willows and all the big weeds cut back. They're working on some shouldering between Road twenty and nineteen, there's a stretch there that needs widening them, so working on that. Again, they'll start shouldering this week, I hope to get all other shouldering work done, we'll do Road twenty-one, which will be between P and S, and that'll be, you know, two mile stretch of gravel, and that's where their next gravel operation will go. Working also on some approaches on some of the paved roads, and as they have time, they'll hit some of those. Traction haul of course to L thirty-two, because we're making chips, and doing well, might we wrap that up and then just go straight into three-quarter inch road base? And the grinder is scheduled now for the Monday, April second, we got that confirmed, so.
You're getting on this early, buddy, I know. Never been ahead of schedule before. Cause you want to take the last half of the year off.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. We got it all done, we're gonna start in July and take the rest of the year off, yeah.
So, that grinder, does it come with the crew or does it-
It's a one-man crew. He comes in with his truck and his tools and all that, and a one-man show, and he gets after it, we roll it down, compact it.
Do you just need help with traffic control and things like that?
We do a little bit, depends on, yeah, obviously traffic control a little bit. But then we have to have a roller and blade behind it, just push it all back down, settle it back, reshape it through.
He grinds it, that's, that's, it flips up there good, doesn't it?
Yeah, and that's good, and lets it air out, and we get it to some time before we gravel it to settle down, and then we'll gravel before the chips hit.
Still a question, that little section over there on S between, what is it, two, five and four? Are you gonna, are we, are we doing that?
We're, we're looking at-
There's one section that had water issues, I think.
We built it up, but then the hillside is a spray. I don't have an answer for that either. We're gonna try some drainage, we're gonna, Darren Stone's just about ready to get his hot platter up and running. We're gonna look and maybe pave in some of these little sections with asphalt, see if that does better than chip seal.
There you go.
We don't have an answer though, I mean, we know if we put drainage in-
When you didn't have road base wet, there is no answer for it.
Chip seal and water don't mix at all, asphalt's a little better, but. We got one at BB too, so. Okay, so, anyway, that's it for the schedule, so. I need to visit with you guys about this scheduled auction coming up, since the auction. We've got five vehicles that we want to put in this auction. Three of them are old, through one ton of old orange dump trucks, we're gonna get rid of three of those. But I've also got two old pickups that we traded with Dolores County that I would like to pull back out of fleet for three-quarter tons and sell them myself at this auction. I know I need to ask because they technically belong to fleet now, but short of going for a GoFundMe account on our webpage, I need some money here because I, I don't know how fleet works exactly and I really don't want to get into it, but I do know this. Those two new pickups are, are gonna be bought by fleet now or not, by my own choosing, which I still think is better for us and fleet, for low-mileage vehicles. But that money that, or wherever fleet was gonna get it, is no longer available to me to pay for them. So, we're looking at sixty thousand dollars plus or minus, and I'm trying to gather up as much money as I can.
Well, didn't Clint, didn't Clint have about a five vehicle in your inventory that needed to be, that were, were not being used?
That's part of this, yeah.
And this is part of this, this is part of that, yeah.
Well, rather than it go into my fleet fund, I'd rather it go into my purchase of these two pickups coming out, these new vehicles, these new one-tons.
Yeah, can that be done?
Yeah, yeah, if you say so today.
I think all we have to do is approve.
Approve done it, yeah, that's all.
And I think part of it too, there's a mixture of what isn't, isn't fleet with the, with the-
Like, cause the one-ton dump trucks, they don't leave, but the other two pickups are.
It's some tidying up of old business, is what it is, we're tidying up some business. And this is really a good thing for fleet because these are low-mileage vehicles coming in, he's not gonna benefit off of them. But I still need to pay for them, one way or the other, whether fleet does it or I do it, I gotta pay for them.
Low, low mileage as far as what they are-
Annual usage, right, right, right. So, we're cleaning up two old pickups, and we're cleaning out three of them old orange dump beds. So, we're getting two in, but getting rid of five, but I still gotta pay the bill, so.
Is Clint okay with that?
I haven't talked to him about it. He's been gone all week last week and I was busy, so I just haven't had a chance to visit him, so.
Rob and I talked about it, it makes sense to me, it's a little out of the ordinary, but it's-
Well, we're gonna have some of these things come along and we're- migrate.
We're tweaking a little this, little-
Try to hit the same completely like that.
But when it comes down to it, two in the end, that three less vehicles for insurance at three hundred and seventy-five bucks.
That's a thousand bucks, right there, yeah.
So, with your permission, I'm gonna put those in the auction and keep the funds to help pay for these new vehicles we've got coming in. That, and there's some other accounts that we're gonna clean up, there's some reserves left from last year's fleet system that I know we can draw off of, I'm sure of. Are basically, we have a line item B, our line item on our budget to pull a little bit out, I can get about twenty-two thousand from there. So, I think I'll end up taking about twenty-two thousand out of my, uh, capital outlay, so I'll pay the rest of it off. But like I said, short of the nuclear option, that's worth, you know, take it out of my two million you owe me, I, you know. I don't know what else to do except reach out and dig over it and try to come up with something else to pay for it.
I don't think I'm gonna, I ain't gonna, I ain't gonna get the money generated off of them at the auction and then-
Do you have anything else you're gonna put in the auction?
Oh, there's some old pickup beds that, you know, we, we switched over a lot of these pickups to flat bed, work beds. And then beds are sitting around just rotting. We, you know, sometimes do well in these auctions, sometimes we don't, but it's better than having them sitting around doing nothing. And I'm gonna clean those up and get them out of the way before they get damaged, beyond what they already are, with different things. Uh, we've got some fuel tanks that we don't need anymore by switching out pickups, we're reducing the number of fuel tanks, we don't go into the auction. We've got some shelving that we had up there underneath one of the sheds, is of no use to us, it's just old shelving, we're gonna clean that all up, so. We're on a kind of clean-out mission, bring clean, bring clean in and put it in this auction, so. Okay?
Do we need to make a motion?
I need to make a motion.
Yeah, do, to allow the trucks to the auction, yes.
The three of them are okay, cause those are one-tons, but there's the, there's unit number three dash thirteen and unit number three dash sixteen that are, that I'd like to pull out of fleet and sell, as long as I circle where I like to own the commercial.
I would like to move that unit three dash thirteen and unit three dash sixteen from our fleet department that are in the county road shop's ownership, be allowed to be taken to auction. And those funds go to purchase two new trucks.
Yes, sir.
I need to move, or I'll second, then, then move in second that two units, unit three dash thirteen and three dash sixteen be pulled out of the fleet department to the road department. Or be taken to the auction and the funds go to the road department. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Does this affect fleet's budget at all or?
No, because if, if the way this would've worked, if I had just gotten right this money, would've went in to buy two new pickups, or another pickup for the road department. And we've already, we're already gonna put in close to thirty-two thousand dollars this year into the pool, out of our funding. So, this really helps this more than it does that. And it also, with Clint not having the one-tons now, he doesn't have to worry about servicing them and all that on a regular basis and keep track of the mileage for mileage to pay, it just simplified a lot of things here, so. And I don't know what we'll do next year, I don't have any old pickups, I mean, that kind of cleans out all the old pickups for a while. So, anything else we got, we wanna hold out to for a while, so. And it'll, it'll fall into fleet, that's the right way to do it.
Right, and then the rest, I'm gonna fall into fleet, yeah.
Exactly. If we hadn't ordered these two trucks already, I don't think we would be having this conversation right now, but somebody's gotta pay for these trucks, so.
You need the trucks, so.
I need the trucks too, yeah, so.
One thing, I don't know if you saw the minutes last time, but we kept the one-tons in fleet that were regular vehicles. But the, the one-tons that had special equipment like dump beds or something like this, stay in the-
I did not see that, but okay, I, I heard that they took care of that business, yeah.
So, one-tons are still in fleet, but one-tons with specialty equipment, because it's, why do I need to drive a one-ten with a dump truck for my everyday use, you know? So, that's, that's how those are, old, so where they're, they're yours, but it, but someone else may have a one-ten vehicle in the fleet.
That's a good point.
Or whatever, you know, maybe for a snowplow or, you know, with a-
Everybody's pickup or whatever you need.
I think, would the pickup, might it be a one-ten later, Tom?
Uh, three-quarter or one-ten, I can't remember.
It makes good sense, yeah.
But just in case, so that-
So, we're just kind of defining it off of specialty heavy equipment versus regular road equipment, or road pickups. Okay, good?
Does they need a one-ten transportation?
And we're gonna do something same in the future with these big heavy flatbeds and stuff, or maybe switch over to one-tons and just for a little more suspension and, and still keep them in fleet, you know, that's, that's a good idea, actually, so.
Bill being pushed in our, our state legislature to, that'd be great. You know, for that money, we're going to let it spread it, you know, throughout the state, throughout, all over the place.
And it's been used to balance the budget.
Right, yeah, the government, governors used it for all kinds of sundry things, have nothing to do with who generated that severance tax money, so. But hopefully, I'm hopefully, I'm hoping that that's something that will get, get made, made into, into law, that they can't dip in there. But I think it was Ritter, took two hundred million out of, two hundred million out of the severance tax money to balance his budget. And never, never to be repaid, and never to be put back, so.
French drains on that root section. We're going to look at it and put them in at an angle and try to get them where they'll pick.
Perfection of that to the asphalt, other than for chip seal, yeah, yeah.
It just, it just.
It's gonna make the life of the road that much better.
I think so, so, well, I, we're doing everything right on. No, that's right, so. The water source with the Bureau of Acclamation, DWCD, out by the fairgrounds there, uh, that's looking good. I see where, I'm not sure who did it, I haven't talked to Brandon, he's on vacation, but they put a meter up so we can meet the water from there, which is good, so, we'll do that. Uh, the Bureau is ready to hand me a statement, or official letter, saying we have a right to use their easement to back our trucks in there. I've just gotta get a permission slip from the landlords, which I was working on on Friday, I hopefully will pick that up today, and then take that over to the Bureau and hand it to them, and they'll sign off on it and we'll have everything in place, so, yeah. So that's a good move, I saw that, good for, good for getting water there, so. So.
Have you received any payment for the covert on?
No, sir.
Have you ever heard any?
No comments back, neither have I. Figure that.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, sure.
Thank you. Yeah, I've got a price on that, um, cut a deal on that shoulder builder, you got any?
No, I, I think I've got my focus right in the moment. Fairgrounds next.
How's it going?
Good, Tanner, how are you?
Yeah.
Good.
Yeah, and that, that revenue really, really helps a lot, you know, with us doing the stalls in RVs. It's, it's averaging really close to about fifteen hundred a weekend on stalls in RVs. Now, on our facility fee, we're only making four hundred and fifty dollars, so.
But you're picking it up.
Picking it up on that end, cause they're on the U three, so. Uh, this last weekend, we had the, on Saturday, the Tomahawk team roping, uh, that's a new event, that's the third one we've had there. Hopefully, there's many more to come, they're doing a pretty good job. They're looking at having several more ropings this summer, and then possibly a big trailer roping this summer, where they give horse trailer away to the winner.
Wow.
And I'm also in discussions with a lot of the, uh, two other really big producers down in Arizona to get them to come up and put on some real big team ropings. That's the number one thing we're lacking on Karen, I don't know why.
Team roping, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, that and cutting.
And that used to be big.
The cutting, yeah, the, the, the local groups kind of disbanded and went away and, um, I'm still working on them, but their big thing is coming up with enough cattle, cause they'll have, like, when they have a big cutting down in Farmington, they, they did away with that show, but when they would have that show, they would go through about a thousand head of cattle in that weekend. They, they get them from James Schneider, so he would have to truck them all the way down to Farmington, so that's why for three years, I've been trying to get on them and explain to them the economics of it, if you guys have it here.
Yeah, they got them.
Yeah, what you're gonna save on your trucking is gonna more than double pay for your facility, you know, and, and, and we compete facility wise with them, but their big hangup is the, um, that we have panel stalls, not the permanent sided stalls, which is what the grant we're gonna apply for.
Right.
To get fifty of those, so. Um, we also had a commodities giveaway Saturday, uh, everything went well with it. Four States Ag Expo is the fifteenth through the seventeenth, that's what we're doing all week. The guys are in the process of tearing the indoor arena out right now. We will have, so you guys know what our schedule is, we have the indoor arena out, we bring the blade in, we level the ground. We get the indoor arena completely rolled and done by Friday, and then I allow them to come in and mark their booth spaces out and put their curtains up this weekend. And then we also do all the setup outside for them this week. I mean, it'll be in upwards three hundred and fifty to four hundred panels that we set up out there for their stalls, for their arenas, all those things, we get all that stuff done this week. So then, number one, if we have a snowstorm come in, we can do nothing but concentrate on getting snow out of there so their event's not ruined. And, uh, if, if the weather's good, I can give my guys some time off the first of the week, because we're gonna be putting in so many hours that weekend, so. That's why we do that, it, it works better for us, kinda planning ahead on that.
So this next weekend's gonna be slow for you?
Nothing, yeah, nothing going on out there, other than them doing their setup out there.
That's cool.
Getting ready.
Yeah, we have the weekend off ourselves, which is the first one since the first of the year. The, the twenty-fourth out there, that, uh, we'll have the Sheriff's Water Meeting, that Water one-on-one meeting. I believe they're doing one at the Ag Expo and another one at the Fairgrounds. And then the week of the twenty-sixth through the thirtieth, they're doing their physical assessment training. It works out good for us, they, the arena's out, it's just a big open space, and they do their, set up their little columns, move all their obstacles while we're doing other stuff, so.
I've been out there one year and did the course.
You did?
I passed.
Did you make it?
I was, I was exhausted.
Are you a deputy now?
No, I'm not. But I can do, I can do the stuff.
Good.
I was afraid.
I don't watch, right? April sixth through the seventh is the Four Corners Home and Garden Show. Then that following weekend, the thirteenth through the fifteenth is the Cortez Gun Show. The twenty-first is commodities giveaway, uh, February second through the third, which is during the week. C-Dot Truck Review, and I, I worked out trade with them.
You mean May, not February, don't you?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, that's it. Um, we worked out trade with them and, uh, the gun growl in the past, or, um, you know, things like.
Lights.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
Did you ever, did you ever get to say, is there any way out there on those lights on the highway that there are these higher powered beams put out there?
That's, right now, that's the best they can do, but I met with the, the gentleman I work with on that project, kind of a good thing he's for each horse program, so he's involved out at the fairgrounds a lot more, and, um, he said there is a new type of a light coming out that is a lot larger kinda casing on it, but it has its own solar panel on the light, and it has a little wind turbine on it, and it's powered by wind too. And it will put out about twice the amount of light as with these lights, I mean, the technology is changing every day on all this stuff, so he thought that that, this might be a good area to test that, and he was gonna get more information on it, so.
That's about what we need, about twice what we.
Twice, well, what, yeah, what we really need is it to go twice out as far as what it does to the south.
Mm-hmm.
So, um, then the, the fifth of May, commodities giveaway, the sixth of May, four H livestock, uh, tag in. May eighth is the barrel race in the indoor arena, night race. May twelfth is the twelve hours of May's party bike race. May fifteenth is the barrel race in the indoor arena, PM. The eighteenth to nineteenth will be the first car races. The twentieth, we have another barrel race in the outdoor arena. The twenty-sixth is a possible monster truck event. I'm, I'm working on, um, don't have a contract in place, we're, we're working on dates, but they're looking at coming through here and doing it in, uh, at the race, the race.
Good.
And then, uh, you know, if, if that happens, that's gonna be crazy, we'll have that the twenty.
Start off the racing, huh?
Yeah, we'll have that the twenty-sixth, then the thirty-first, we have the Jordan World circus in the outdoor arena. The second, we have the back country horseman pack sale. The sixth through the tenth is the Mount Arado Review Carnival, um, and that's pretty much where I went up to. Um, I did include on the eighteenth of September, looking at an industrial, oh, obviously, I'm sorry, industrial. So that's kind of our schedule, what's going on with, with Slant. I have a, a question about the stage, so, the stage was, was gave to us by the city with the pretense that it can still be used by the high school for their graduation and for the parade lights.
I think we even put that in writing, I don't think that was a pretense, I think that we have an agreement with them, if I recall right, yeah.
And, um, so for the parade lights, I hauled it with the county truck, we set it up and I carried it down. For the high school graduation, their maintenance guys come get it, and they're responsible, they send reliability on it. Uh, Jonathan Brooks, uh, with the city in charge of events contacted me and wants to know Swoz. Wants, wants to use it for their graduation. I don't have a problem with it, I just wanted to run it by the commissioner. Thing is, you know, if, if we do allow it, but. Celtic days, where they have sensed they're not going to be in the event at the fair, they're going to do it on their own at Park De Vida.
That's a different, a different, a different way from the fair.
And they want to get the stage as well. I didn't know what the commissioner's thoughts are on that. On, on my end, um, if we do allow that, I don't wanna get in the habit of us delivering it, setting it up, tearing it down, you know, assuming all that light building. That thing's big, bulky, big, big.
I think anything outside of our agreement on, on what we agreed with the city, where we agreed to. And I don't know if Swoz is considered part of the school system.
For the school system, where Dew is gonna do the setup on that, with their maintenance guys do that? So it would be the same people who do it, they would do it for Swoz and MCHS.
Yeah.
And they are two different weekends?
Yeah, 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 so we can, yeah. I, I don't have a problem with Swoz, you know, but I just didn't know.
Celtic, I think they leave it, they need it, they, they, they lease it from you, they, they'll lease it.
And wanna establish a, a fee for that? Say the, the school districts are in no charge, cause that's what the pretense was, as is.
We agreed to that with the city.
Yeah, as is the, um, parade lights, but, and the other, I know like the Liver's, uh, the Lower's River Fest has wanted to use it in the past, and I've always told them, no, that's pretty good.
Pretty good.
It's, it's the whole of that. It's all my truck, like three quarter ton truck, it's all it'll be, it's the whole of it, yeah.
What, uh, what would be, uh?
Well, and I guess, so, this is related, but not really, I mean, the tents that the, um, Fair Board bought, you know, they're in the same boat, they weren't sure, and with them, with that, they have training and they have to be the ones who set it up and take it down because of insurance purposes. Which is all fine and dandy, but, you know, they're trying to decide if they're gonna rent that to other people, so it's kind of, you know, it kind of runs together, and I.
Any places like, uh, rent all rentals, you rent tents or bid, and see if there's any.
I, I was, but I was gonna make a comment, you're gonna have to be very careful about who's doing what. I think your, your man on the end of the table didn't say you're gonna have some kind of lease agreement or contract, but the biggest concern that you're gonna have is who's setting up and tearing down. Because that's what's, that's what the issue is for those, I mean, is it, is it county responsible for that, or, or whomever?
So we.
And we're gonna make sure that somebody that knows what they're doing is doing that, cause if you, yeah, that, that could be a really.
You should kill somebody trying to set those wings up.
Oh, I don't think we should be responsible at all for that, and we need to, yeah, we need to make them release us, identify us, and.
But then do we get people out there that don't know what they're doing, and that dumb stuff, and tear it up, and, you know.
See, and that, that brings that, just what Ken said, that brings that exposure back to county, and I, I would be very concerned about letting it go from what your little circuit is.
I got you, that makes sense.
But that's, you know, we can figure out whatever it wants to, but.
You wanna just stick to just with the, the schools, all of it included now?
Yeah.
Okay, which I'll be an interest, get, get through them, and then if we need to do some sort of a contract, um, to hold us harmless, or whatever you think. Currently, we don't, with the high school, they come pick it up, they do all the setup.
I think, though, that that, I, I mean, I could refer back to what our agreement was, but I remember when we made this, we put it in writing that they were gonna be responsible for it. Um, so I think we're covered already for the, what we already are doing.
Okay.
It's just if we.
And the decision is to just do it twice now, once for the high school, once for the.
Yeah, and, and obviously, we have first precedent, if we have a bed that's something wrong, then, then they're, aren't able to use it.
Yeah, well, I mean, whether or not you wanna make money on it and try to set something else up, that's, that's different, I mean, I don't object to it, we just need to make sure that we're, we're protected.
I, I think liability wise, that, that would be exposed enough.
Or you'll be running around all over the place, turning seven about when you've got up.
Yeah, we're already trying to.
I couldn't use going on.
Well, the Fair Board decided with the tent, right, so.
And I, I'm not sure what their final decision on that is, is, um, you know, they, they have to have the insurance for us to, for them to use it for the fair. So if they're having to pay the insurance, they may, they're considering renting it in another case to help cover the costs of that insurance, but I don't know what their final decision is on that.
Okay. Um, there's that, uh, the Fairgrounds commercial is complete, um, it's up on the front of the county. That'd be perfect, so, I, I talked with Jim at IT, um, about possibly burning that video to DVD, putting a TV like that out there kind of by our, our restroom. out there kind of by our, our restroom in the indoor room and have it run, have it run all day during all of our events, if there's not any marketing in that. Um, you know, obviously, we have to worry about some concerns and things like that, so we'll have to get some sort of a box to put that TV in. But I think that would be a pretty good marketing idea out there.
And it suggested that maybe since we don't even use that to.
That might just work just fine, that might just be direct like that, yeah.
Yeah, so I don't know how, how busy Jim is or if, if it's something that would be able to get done before Ag Expo or not. Um, I talked with Jerry at Cortez Electric about, um, power wise, he can get it powered there no problem, so, um, that's one thing we're gonna be working on. I think that would be a pretty good idea. And then, uh, some projects we have going on at the outdoor arena, uh, we have a new rope and chute and add-on chute that we're gonna be putting in after the Ag Expo, um, we'll start working on that. Takes a little longer, so we have to move some stuff around, but we'll, we'll get that in there. And then the gate gate coming into the arena, we're actually gonna move over roughly five feet to kind of center it more on the arena and then on the.
So on the, on the south, the south end of the arena?
Yep, and then on the header box, um, right now, it's just kind of separate section of fence. And they run their ropes for their barriers off there and that fence wiggles, so we're gonna come off that fence where the gate is now, it's like a five foot kicker, that's right there. And then move that gate down to center it better, so it's gonna help multiple things and then I think what we might end up doing as well is putting a very high arch over that gate to where the top arch we can remove, we'll just sleeve it and pin it and then we can remove it if we ever have something, you know, over sixteen foot tall come in, we can still get it in that arena.
Is that gonna make you have to remove those stands on that side?
No, that's what we were originally looking at, um, but the way we're gonna do it now, which I think is a much better idea, is, uh, we're gonna put it to where it's, where the chain link fence is and the stands, the gate will be, oh, about two foot on past uh, the chain link fence to the east is where that gate will inch. So the, the, the one thing is, we're gonna have to make sure, which we already do anyway, that there's no people gathered in that area, because that's where the horses are coming in and out of there, so. But I think we'll take care of two things all at once, so. Yeah, that's all I have.
All of the things.
Quite full.
I know that, I think he's mentioned it to me too, that he's really wanting to figure out a way, and I guess we need to get some prices for remodeling the kitchen. You know, whether we do it with a grant or.
And the bathrooms.
Bathroom, he also mentioned the bathroom, the bathroom came up there. And so those are, those are in, in essence connected, they're, they run down the same section of that, it, it might be, might behoove us, he said those bathrooms are in tough shape. Might be a good time now to see if we can get something to go and do both those at the same time, redo our kitchen, that may, may enhance, may enhance both projects to redo that.
What was your plan on the, on your grant cycle?
So my plan, yeah, how busy we are and such, um, the, I was gonna apply for a grant for the, the portable solid sided stalls, which, uh, let me back up, we are gonna have the high school revenue issue, there's a question as to whether they, we're gonna rotate it every two years or not, but it is gonna be here this year. Last year, we ran into a heck of a problem, we've never had over a hundred and fifty horse stalls, and Wednesday night, they said they sold two hundred and four stalls, so, um, trying to be proactive in that, if we can get these solid sided stalls, fifty of those, that's gonna help us in that aspect. But we're gonna have more of a challenge this year even than what we had last year, because for the rodeo this year, they're gonna use the indoor and the outdoor arena. Where last year, we used it for our, the outdoor arena as a base for the stalls, you know, just to spread the panels out, we're not gonna be able to do that this year. Now, now we have an idea, you know, we have more plan.
Yeah, that was a pretty short notice.
Um, so that's the, the first grant I'm gonna apply for, and then on the. Wait until the fall, just. Other thing that I met with a new lady, I can't remember, a new lady in charge of the Home and Garden Show, she brought up a great point I've never even thought of that I needed to, to discuss with that board, we could possibly work an in-kind trade deal on them doing some of the remodel work and delivering, and running the facility for the, the Home and Garden Show. That's pretty much what I got.
Part of your.
Part of your, under, under your per view is Mr. Over. And you mount around him.
I wanted to make sure he was here.
Tanner's always here. Come on up. Morning, Dad, how are you? Morning, Ben.
How are you, buddy? Well, we tagged on with Tanner just 'cause it actually affects the fairgrounds out there, but we have put in our application for our liquor license. Same situation, beer, um, you know, same, same place, same parameters, everything, and we wanted to make sure you guys knew that was going on. And, uh, hopefully, there won't be any concerns or questions or issues with that, I think Tanner's good with that and what we're doing.
We're, we're, we're well in the past and we'll just keep it working.
What are the, what are the dates of your event?
Seventh through the ninth of June.
Seventh through the ninth?
Renate sent me a, a letter that we wrote last year, um, that allowed them, Monson County Board of Commissioners gave permission to the Uve Mountain Rodeo to serve alcohol to Monson County Fairgrounds located at, well, for the period of, um, the event.
Three days.
Start, I think we're starting around six, five thirty, six.
Five thirty.
Till about nine thirty, nine, nine thirty, something like that. We have, uh, we'll have the same security, we have, uh, you know, the sheriff will bring in the deputies and, uh, to, to patrol the grounds there and that, and then we still have the in and out flow with highway patrol out there on the highway, so.
So the only thing that may change in just by a couple feet, um, is if they, when they center that gate.
Right.
If anything, it just might change, but it's not gonna be anything.
No, it'll be out there on that, uh, south end.
You're inside that fence on the south end, around those bleachers, that sort of thing.
Yes, totally controlled in, in the access.
And the north end will be no alcohol, south end will be alcohol.
And all the best, um, traffic from people can only come in out here, there's no other way.
And it will be served, continue to be served by, uh, um, I assume Bond is coming back again, professional servers, we don't, yeah, we don't deal with, uh, that part of it, so. But we do have to purchase the liquor license for that, so, anyway, but no changes with that, so. Tanner's good with that, that's what we're proceeding forward with that. The other thing that I did wanna kind of let you guys know.
They need to do one.
Oh, I'm sorry, oh, okay, okay, alright.
I, I would like to move that a liquor license for the Uve Mountain Rodeo Roundup. Uh, dates, June seventh through the ninth, in their designated areas for the rodeo, be approved, second. We moved in second to approve the serving of alcohol as, as been done in the past. At the Uve Mountain Rodeo, June seventh through the ninth, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll get you a letter.
Thank you, yeah. Um, one of the other things that, a couple of other things that Tanner and I and Bobby Yates, we were out there the day, it, he had a good idea for us, you know, we still struggle with keeping people off the north end fence, trying to just sit on the fence and, and our, our found control does a good job with that for it, but, um, Tanner was talking about the other day and, and we're kind of looking at, maybe we can help some with that, but putting solid, like quaky stays just to dress that into that fence up over there, and then if we, if we take them high enough over the top of that pipe, they can't sit on them.
And they're a little.
Yeah, well, my father-in-law used to take a grease bucket and just smear the whole top rail. He told me, he said, that's what he used to do with them yahoos, he said, yeah, he just took a grease bucket and just smeared that whole top rail with it, but. Anyway, but it, it would dress that up and it would probably help that situation down there, but, I mean, it, we, you know, that's just something that we, we've kind of talked about. The other thing I did want to, uh, catch you guys up on is the RFD TV, uh, uh, program that, uh, that, that, that we've got coming in, um, they're gonna do that shoot special cowboy moments. We have sent them their deposit, so we are booked on their schedule, um, um, and they're gonna be here to meet with us the twentieth of March. So, I don't know if, if any of you guys want to be there, right now, we're scheduled to meet in the deal board room at the bank, Keenan. But we may have to, we may move that yet, I don't know yet for sure, but, but we can sure let you know, but, um, you know, I wanted them to come and talk to the group, kind of let us know, kind of what we need to do and how they're gonna proceed and what they're actually gonna be doing and that, but, uh. You know, we, we might, it probably would help, it probably would, if it's available, let's go ahead and. Yeah, okay.
What time?
Yeah, five thirty, yeah. If that would work, what, we just need to kind of get their. They have to have a, um, well, they wanna schedule some interview for folks and such like that, so. Actually get there to shoot the commercial and that during the rodeo and that, so, anyway. Pretty excited about that, the total cost is gonna be about fifty seven hundred dollars for that. We have sent our application into the largest tax folks, hopefully, they can help us a little bit with that, but we are looking for, for. For that, but, uh, I think, uh, uh, well, we're pretty excited about this, I think it's, 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 uh, the, the visibility the community's gonna get out of this is, is gonna be substantial, I think, it's gonna run on national TV and, and the last numbers I got from, I think we're gonna have about twenty eight?
Twenty six or twenty eight.
Twenty six or twenty eight pairs on, on that, and then he said it would be picked up by other, other, uh, networks, 'cause they'll just, you know, it'll roll, yeah.
More localized networks.
It'll, it'll roll with that, so, it, you know, it's gonna be about community history, you know, you know, geared tour, more, more ag, rural, ranching, you know, rodeo stuff, but, uh, I, I think it, uh, it, it could be pretty neat, I, they, their quality outfit, and I, I met with them in December and, uh, I was pretty impressed, so I think. They sent us an email on our website. And one of their. Well, one of their marketing guys had been in this area years ago. And, uh, he, uh, he'd always liked it around here, and so he contacted us through our website and, uh, so I had a meeting with him out there in Vegas during the national finals and, uh, you know, we'll go from there. So, thirty, uh, pretty. Hour, hour and a half, yeah, yeah, not even more than two hours, hour and a half, maybe?
Starting at five thirty?
Yeah, start at five thirty.
And what we have is, we can have the, the door, program the door.
Oh, oh, I see.
So what time would you like this?
Start, oh, five fifteen?
Five fifteen?
Yeah, and then if we, if we're in here a couple hours, I'd be surprised.
So probably what I'll do is probably have it open for about thirty minutes and then it will lock, but you can go out at any time.
Right, okay, yeah, yeah, have it open until six, probably, yeah, and then we'll, uh, and then we'll come, uh, and then, yeah, like I said, I'm sure we'll be out of here within two hours pretty easy. 'Cause we'll have a little meeting when they get through, so. I appreciate that.
What was the date, huh?
Twentieth of March, right.
So, just so you know, I mean, the door will be open, and then, and then there's a little button, and then when you wanna leave, you just push the button and then it will unlock the door and you can go out.
Has an exit, exit button on it?
Maybe I better write that down, I have to remember that, can I, can I figure it out?
You'll, you'll be pushing on the door.
Then you'll figure it out.
You see the glowing exit button over here, and you'll push that and then.
Well, the other night when we went into the bank, I set the alarm off, they had to call Larry to get him to come down and put it in. So, I don't know, I, I tell you, uh, but any, any questions, or anything we can do better out there, from you guys, I mean, we. We hope to continue to.
Whenever you encounter, whatever I see of everything going, that, that, that's become a great, great event out there, I mean, transition from the old leisure grounds out to that, I know it was a struggle for the first few years of where that place was.
Yeah, we've come a long way to some portable greasers out there, haven't we? Well, I remember those.
Yeah, it's pretty rough the first few years.
That was quite the, yeah, that was quite the deal, so. Um, new venue this year out there, we're having the, uh, bullfight tour. Thursday and Friday night out there, so if you wanna see that, you need to come Thursday and Friday night, those clowns that fight the bulls and, yeah. It should be fairly, fairly entertaining. Yeah, we're pretty excited about that, we're, you know, we're, our, our Thursday and Friday nights are short nights, no question.
Saturday's always.
Yeah, Saturday, we sell out, but, uh, we're trying to get that, uh, for those two nights, and I kind of have an idea that we may sell out all three nights this year, so. Pretty, pretty looking forward to that and just kind of keep ourselves going the best we can. Tanner, anything?
No, no.
Yeah?
Do a great job.
Any questions for us, concern? I am renewing our insurance policy right now, we'll let you know that, hell, we're, we're working on that right now. Comes up, comes up the first of April, I'll get everything to, uh, Tanner, we're, we'll be good to go again, so, anyway. Alright, thank you. I appreciate that, you bet.
Thanks, Tanner.
Looking for another good year.
We are, we are. We'll let you guys go ahead and get on to good business here.
Thanks for everybody.
Yeah, thank you, I appreciate it. You staying?
Yeah.
Okay, see you guys. Anything for me, anything that you need, I, I think things are kind of tied up right now, so.
Come right on up, Captain. Don't wanna do anything, you don't wanna know.
That's Cap.
Morning, Cap.
How are you?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Well, Tony's not in here yet, 'cause we're a little. Yeah, we're a little ahead of her, aren't we?
We have one board member, Rachel over here.
You wanna come up, Rachel?
Come on up, Rachel.
Represent twelve hours Mesa Verde?
Yeah. Good on ya, I didn't know you were a board member.
I do a lot of things outside work.
Good to you.
We're gonna make her the chairman as fast as we can.
She's a go-getter, I know that, I know that, she's a go-getter.
Uh, this is our, uh, part of our yearly request, uh, I guess, first, the first part of the ceremony here is to make sure we're still okay to do what we've done in the past with, uh, we give away free, uh, alcohol in the form of beer. I don't think we've ever done wine yet, I don't think, somebody has to give us free wine before we're gonna give it away.
If you're gonna give it away, they better give it to you.
Right, and we've, we've been successful every year, I think we've been doing this six or seven years with the free beer now, and Scott's been really good at, they just give it to us. They're great sponsors and, uh.
Thirteen?
May.
May thirteen? Or is it the twelfth?
It's never been a problem because, uh, we have just about the number of participants, as we have, we have, I mean, it sounds like a lot, we have a thousand beers, but.
You got, you got a lot of people out there too.
About a thousand people.
That's assuming everybody even takes their one drink, I think.
We universally run out and people are disappointed, so.
I passed up on my one free drink before.
Never, never had a problem with it.
Never had any, yeah. Yeah, by the end of that day, there's a dead junk tire, all that's gonna do is put him to sleep.
That alcohol turns into, into glycogen in seconds, you know.
Yeah.
So we need that permission and we'd just like to, uh, say how thankful we are that the commissioners and the county are such great sponsors of this thing, 'cause it really, I don't want you to get any ideas, but it doesn't cost us very much to rent the fairgrounds. And, uh, it's a, it's a absolutely perfect venue for the whole thing and, uh.
That's pretty cool, when you do that from, have a place to do that and have all that event going on and still be out of the way and have something that.
I mean, the fact that we don't have to do any highway crossing to get up to, it's just amazing.
Yeah, that box covered under that highway is just a big gift. Oh, yeah, it is, oh, my gosh, yeah.
And they went in and, and put some more rip route down, have you looked?
Yeah, they fixed it up a bunch, I think our job, I haven't really figured it out yet, but I think our job of getting them through those bridges we built in the past down there, I don't think we need to do them anymore.
Wow, you may be able to just run right on. Wow, you may be able to just run right on.
It depends on how much work, handwork we can do, but it's, it's level now coming on out. I think we're in great shape. The event continues to have just a phenomenal following, I think we're just about sold out again.
What is your limit?
I'm not allowed to tell anybody that. It's around, it's between eight and nine hundred, but sponsors get, at a certain level, get entries. Certain people we've had in the past that we'd like to say they're in the race, we let them, you know. Famous people, whatever, you know. But it's that kind of number, it's eight to nine hundred paying competitors. The sponsorship money we've been able to raise out of the community keeps going up every year. We've got a couple people on the committee, on the board that are really working hard at that and they're doing very well at that. And last year, I think the number was about sixty-five thousand dollars, wasn't it?
That's what we donated, yeah, the most.
We gave six, sixty-four or seven.
Yeah, and I think that's the most they've ever been able to.
And that list of beneficiaries is we just, we take no money ourselves out of the race. There's about eleven or twelve of us on this board. And those are the main people we gave it to. And then even at the bottom, we have discretionary that you see down there. And those will be people that at the last moment, we feel we have enough money, they ask us. We try to always make the theme kids. The, sort of the, the base reason for the, for the money we give away is to benefit kids. And so, the bigger beneficiaries up at the top are Vanest and Opinion Project. They're real happy to have us.
Well, I'm sure they are.
I, I'm amazed that the number's gotten that big. It hasn't been very long since we gave forty thousand dollars away.
It just shows you, when you have something done for the right reasons and the right place with the right people, it just keeps going and going and going. It's a great, it's a great event, it really is a great event for our area.
And things...
Well, he says it's gonna be louder this week.
You're getting more money, we gotta keep going up and up and up.
So, he's gonna wanna probably start doing a artwork show at the end?
Well, we could, you know, we could always work into some kind of a real output. Depending on how many racers were still awake at the end of the, but it got dark, yeah.
You know, if you haven't seen it, who are here can get up at seven o'clock that morning, so that he may twelve. You gotta, you gotta be there right at seven, when this gentleman sets off his cannon.
And hundreds of bikers are running to...
It's, and then seeing them come out of that, out of that rodeo arena, I mean, it's like, it's like you see those ants out in the forest, you know, coming along.
Yeah, they do, oh yeah, it's beautiful on there on, on Tanner.
That's a cool angle, yeah.
Oh, yeah, he had his drone up there with his camera, and he got him to run and run and down, yeah.
It's on the front page of the county website, anybody in the public, sure, with as many people as you can. Right there, you just click it right there and... On the tractor.
On the tractor, okay.
I don't know volume wise what you need to do.
Is it right at the beginning of it?
I don't remember where it's at.
It's throughout.
The Fairgrounds had another record-breaking year in two thousand sixteen. The general public utilized the facility three hundred and fifty-eight days out of the year. The Fairgrounds held major events and practices on two hundred and eighty-five of those days and had seventy-eight thousand four hundred and sixty-five people visit the facility this past year. That's three times the total population of Montezuma County. The Montezuma County Fairgrounds hosts a variety of rodeo events, such as youth town roundup rodeo, horse state junior rodeo, Native American rodeo, ranch rodeos, and the Colorado High School rodeo. Other events include forage activities, barrel racing, horse cutting, horse shows, and team rodeo. The Montezuma County Fairgrounds is open year-round for overnight horse sports, located just minutes from the Four Quarters in southwest Colorado, between Fort Adams and Mangus, and across the street from... It's a hundred sixty by three hundred feet and can be set up for many different events. A variety of different events happen each year on our two hundred and sixty-eight acre property, including the horse ten gun show, county fair, horse jack expo, twelve hours of Mesa Verde...
There we go.
Four Quarters open garden show, car races, steam games, range of cartables, Jordan World circus, cross country meetings, dog shows, car shows, archery practice, hunting, vacation class, swap meets, circus, sea doc truck rodeo, demo derby, community meetings, and many more. The Montezuma County Fairgrounds would like to thank all organizations and people that utilize the Fairgrounds. Without your support, we would not be able to have such a wonderful facility. The Montezuma County Fairgrounds would love to host your upcoming events and have an excellent staff to help make your events a success. Please feel free to contact us and book your next event. You can call the office at nine seven oh five six five one thousand or visit us online at montezumacounty.gov for details and availability. Horseman cars are also available to ride in our arena year-round for a small fee.
So, we tried to represent everybody as equal as possible.
Well, a lot happens there.
Pretty good representative.
Busy place.
Yeah.
Busy place. And you guys don't keep it busy.
Yeah, it brings people from eleven states, was it? The twelve hours event?
Oh, yeah.
Well, occasionally, once in a while, it'd be like some guy from England who did come for this, but he was like mountain biking in Montana or something, and somebody said, "You should go to this thing in Colorado."
Go down there and check it out.
And so, indirectly, we get some pretty far-flung people coming out.
How would you need a motion on that?
Okay. I would like to move that the twelve hours of Mesa Verde, on May twelfth, two thousand eighteen, be approved to give away their beer that is donated by Scott Brewery to give to their riders at the end of the day.
Yeah, second, been moved as second to allow the twelve hours of Mesa Verde to give away the beers that they do annually at the twelve hours Mesa Verde event. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And do you get beer from anybody other than scholars or just scholars?
They actually, because they're distributors, stuff from, there's a place called Oscar Blues, it's in Fort Collins, I think. It shows up with their stuff too.
But the distributor, the distributor...
They're the distributor, so everything comes from Scott.
I just wanted to make sure you're limited.
The fact you said it was Scott, and if they bring us other brands...
Other brands, that's absolutely true.
Have I given you a letter on that before?
An approval?
I mean, I can...
Tony may have gotten it, I don't know.
I'll do the same that I do for the rodeo. I'll make sure that...
So, because we're, Tony, Tony is probably gonna walk in here about a minute or two. So, if she does, recognize her, applaud her. But we got all the work done here.
We've gotten the business stuff together, we're glad you came. Your other compadres were here early, so we, we went ahead.
She and some others, really, I mean, it's hundreds of hours a year.
And they've been at it, how long has it been, Jim Bob's been...
For years, for...
A decade, almost?
For a long time.
It's over ten.
A long, long time, I know that. Been a long time.
And Danny Gregory.
Well, you've got a lot of volunteers, you've got a lot of people to come out there and volunteer to march their...
And it wouldn't happen that day without volunteers.
Yeah, yeah, you gotta, you gotta...
The number to the community is over half a million dollars now. That's a big, that's a lot of cookie sales. Thank you very much, appreciate the time.
Thank you, guys, and we'll, we'll hope for a beautiful day out there.
Yeah.
Nice sunny day.
Snowstorms don't help.
Snowstorms do not help that at all, we'll hope for a nice sunny day.
Yeah, any of these people, we could probably...
What's that?
Clint, Bobby. I don't, no.
Just to let you guys know, we've lost streaming.
Oh, really? Did it just happen?
No, we lost half hour ago.
I'm streaming. I mean, as of about thirty seconds ago, like, here's Rachel walking out of the room, a little delayed, but...
Maybe it's just me.
I mean, it's, I think sometimes my wifi picks up the Montezuma County Attorney one, which is downstairs, so I'm using the Montezuma County Attorney wifi, which is, I think it's the same thing, but different password and stuff, I'm not sure. But, you know, it's, there we are.
It could be me, because I'm not able to even save my record, so it could be me.
We're on.
Yeah, yeah, I usually keep it on the background while I'm doing other work. Check it every now and then. Make sure when we're in executive session, we're not being broadcast. It's, it's happened to me before. That's when I started doing this.
Oh, okay. I'll tell you what it is. Unavailable, unavailable, unavailable.
We've got Bobby coming in too, right?
Yeah.
Are these guys, are they in the loop on our ADA accommodations next door, or not really?
Who?
The commissioners, I don't remember ever talking to them about that. We don't necessarily need to.
For ADA to what?
The meetings that we had a couple weeks ago on next door with the health department and...
Oh.
Maybe I can bring them up to speed on executive session about one little issue that we took care of. So, I'll add that when we announce it.
Yeah, I'll, I'll just do my report, I went to the Club Twenty meeting last week on Thursday and Friday. And the coverages were on, on Thursday, we had... Friday, Friday, Thursday, we had education workforce and development. We had water committee. And we had the Club Twenty Agricultural Committee. And then on Friday, we had energy committee and public lands and natural resources committee. And had some excellent speakers and covered that. I'll tell you, they cover a lot in those two days, they go from eight-thirty in the morning till five, five-thirty one evening and four o'clock the other evening. I'm gonna present, I'm gonna try and get to, I haven't had time to put together a synopsis of what all we did. Had some excellent speakers, I'll go through the, through all the litany of different speakers and things that we had on each one of those categories. Also went through, and Club Twenty gave us all the bills of, what did she tell me? I think as of that day, we were meeting up there, there were four hundred and fifty-eight bills that were in presently in the legislature, our state legislature. And by the end of the year, they estimate there'll be eight hundred and some odd bills when they're final. To me, that's just a staggering number for a state to be looking at eight hundred new legislative initiatives in one year. I mean, we've got so many laws and rules and stuff on, it's just baffling.
There's probably a lot of overlap.
Well, I don't know, and some of them go by the way, I'm sure not all of them have any kind of meat or substance to them, there are some of them are frivolous things, but to me, to just think that that's what those people are up there doing, I mean... Yeah, I'm sure a lot of them are, but that's still a lot of time and effort and somebody's taking the time and effort to put those all together. So, that was a very, a very good conference, and I will, I will get a synopsis of that, a better report, I have it compiled, all the notes I've taken and everything we've done. But the Club Twenty has, and had, had good representation of all the western slope counties, there was good representation there for most all the counties. There are some that don't belong to Club Twenty, there are very few, I think there's three, three of the western slope counties that don't belong to Club Twenty. But it was very good, and I will get a, get a synopsis of it together for us by the next meeting.
Just, just so everybody knows what he's, these are committees within Club Twenty and they, they meet in, before, they have two annual meetings a year for the whole Club Twenty. And these committees meet ahead of each one of those and put together a presentation for the regular meeting. So, that's what these were. These are probably more educational.
Well, they are, yeah, very educational, very educational.
So, that's what I did last year. Looks like Travis is here. I think you're on.
Okay, Travis is here.
Nice meeting you, Jake. Keen in your towel. Nice meeting you, Travis. Done that, sir.
A pleasure.
We've met before when I used to work for the Soil Conservation District.
Oh, yeah.
We were in high deserts, so...
I got you.
How are you this morning?
We're good.
How are you? Oh, doing all right. Yeah. So, just wanted to come in this morning and approach you all. We have a project in Mangus Valley moving forward, applying for funding from Great Outdoors, Colorado, for transaction costs for conservation easement. And wanted to approach two of you, typically would have been three, to give about a letter of non-injection this morning for a landowner.
How much, how much land is in this filter property?
This is a hundred and six acres, probably.
Hundred and six?
Yep, we're going on, will be the fourth generation that will take over this property. It was originally purchased in nineteen forty-nine by the landowner's father. And I think it represents a, kind of a rare opportunity for our county, which is, you know, we don't see a lot of agricultural land turning over to the next heirs anymore. We're seeing a lot of transition to new landowners. But this property offers an opportunity for the next generation to take over a family farm. Mangus Valley is our highest concentration of conservation easements and conserved land, so this property will push it right around six thousand acres.
You know, we ran into a funny situation. I don't know if it's something that we need to concern ourselves with, the term laws of the county, but up at Steamboat Springs, in, I think that's Ralph County.
Yeah.
They, they've had a tremendous amount of conservation easements that have been put in ranching and high, high mountain meadows and stuff. They, they've had a tremendous amount of conservation easements that have been put in ranching and hide, hide mountain meadows and stuff. Here a year or so ago, they started looking at their planning department and the land use planning and stuff around there, and that the town of Steamboat Springs has become landlocked. Easements, and they, and they can't, they're, they're going to be very restricted in how that town is able to grow and move and change and develop because of these conservation easements. And I'm, I'm just, I'm concerned. And, and this is for a good purpose, you know, for a badly, to continue a badly harming operation. But when you lock a lab piece of land to time and all eternity, and that this is what it's going to be, turn hell or high water, to, you know, we don't know, we don't know what that Mangus Valley is gonna look like in fifty years. We don't know what Monizuma County is gonna look like in fifty years. But when you take, when you start taking large amounts of property, and you start locking them into a designated use that cannot be changed and cannot be altered, I'm not, I'm not sure that I'm, I'm not sure that that's what I want to see us do, you know?
Sure.
And I've got, I've got some conflict with that, I guess.
I can see that, you know, it's not, it's not the right tool for every landowner. It's not the right tool for every situation. At the end of the day, what we're talking about is a willing landowner, you know, willing buyer, the trust. Uh, we're talking about a real estate, um, transaction, um, and at the end of the day, it's private property rights. Um, so, you know, not all landowners agree with them, not all landowners want to pursue them. Where we stand to gain a benefit, and I think, uh, looking at the, the land use code for the county, that I'm sure you're both aware of and intimate with, you know, we identify a number of times in that land use code, the benefit of the rural environment in this county, the benefit of maintaining agriculture, and pursuing opportunities that, um, give farmers and ranchers the opportunity to succeed. And across the country, I think we're facing significant issues with ag. The main one being something that this property identifies and addresses, which is, what are we gonna do with a hundred million acres in this country in the next five years? They're gonna transition out of the owners they have now into new owners. And while some of that could be future development for counties, some of it's gonna be farms that are lost, and they're gonna be lost forever. And I think it's really important that we, uh, as a county, balance the type of, um, development that y'all are talking about. It's important not to close doors, and it's important not to close doors in the way of developing, not doors in the way of preserving the family farm, so. Yeah, I agree. It's not, you know, just like we don't go to a toolbox and pull out a hammer for every problem we need to fix around the house. Conservation easements aren't the answer to everything as well. I think we agree on that.
I'm opposed to the principle of the thing, totally, because I don't think we have, that we have any business locking the land down for the perpetuity. I think it's a, a long thing to do, and it's a paper, it's a fact, and it's just, that, I'm not, I'm favor of it all.
So I guess what we're kinda saying is that we're, we can't object to this, like you said, it's you got a willing buyer and a willing seller.
Yeah.
Uh, but I don't think you're gonna get the Commissioner's blessing on this today.
Okay, that's fine. I'm happy, I'm happy to take that back to the landowner, and I'm happy to take that back to Great Outdoors Colorado.
Here's, I think we've, we've stated that situation, that our, our.
Now, it's my understanding that in the past, given your reluctance to sign these letters, we almost always have them signed. Is that the case? Is there something different about today that separates that out from the past?
I'm not sure how I answer that. Uh, I guess, I guess that James and I both feel like, I guess, in, in a, in a sense, we do, we do object to that type of land use, that type of.
But I guess the question more specifically, and, and just to put it straight out there, is that I have files full of these letters that have been signed. Um, and I understand your reluctance, but I'm wondering what's changed today? That this isn't gonna receive signatures for this, for this property, whereas you have given your signature maybe with reluctance before, on many projects. Uh, so I'm just curious for clarification. I'm happy to walk today, walk away today with no signatures, but it would be nice to have clarification around that.
Hell, I never have signed one of them, because I, I disagree with the principle. But there's another factor, I don't know for sure what it is yet. All I see is parts of the legislation, but Senator Songberg, actually, not Songberg.
Songberg?
The Songberg, maybe, it's true. They had a problem up there.
Mm-hmm.
For the living department. It, the issue with tax credits.
The, pardon, the missing? You're talking, you're. The orphanes?
Right, but for some, they just know that they didn't.
Right.
Then they went in and withdrew them, and one of the people paid them back.
Mm-hmm.
And that's called the court, as far as I know, it's still in the courts.
Mm-hmm.
But, uh, I think they're trying to pass legislation now.
There's a couple of House bills going to communicate. Right, and, and just, just so you all are aware, there, there are a number of cases, few in Colorado, some around the country, where there have been bad deals done. Just like in any business, things go awry, there are bad apples in all situations. Um, just so you're aware, the land conservancy in Monizuma County has not ever in the twenty years that we've been, um, in business with the eighty-eight easements, we hold on forty-five thousand acres dealt with any of these situations, so. Again, I'm happy to walk out of here today without signatures, but, you know, I would encourage that the three of us continue to spend time together, um, as we move forward. And look at ways that we can both fulfill the obligations of the county use code, and also support private property rights and, and local landowners and.
Why, why are they asking for a non-objection to this? I guess, I guess maybe for.
It's a, it's a.
From the front end, if this is a private property, making a personal decision with you, why, 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 why do they need?
Because it's beneficial for Great Outdoors Colorado to know that, um, a county supports a project. They like to see, they like to see that support. It's not a make or break for the project, for sure. But, you know, I would also encourage you gentlemen to review the land use codes. There's a lot of language in there that is very in line with conservation easements and supporting what the world.
We, we don't support land law, not, not zoning, zoning land, where it's never, there's never any change of use in that land, I.
I have no problem with conservation. That's not the problem. It, so long as a guy wants to, uh, wash his own land down.
True.
For his life, or for his kid's life, or whatever, I have no problem with that. But to do it perpetuity, that's not.
Sure, I understand.
It's not right, they don't know what's going on.
Okay. Well, I appreciate your time.
Thanks for coming back, good to meet you.
Yeah.
Good to see you again.
Take care of yourself.
Ahead of schedule, Tom.
Well, it's a, you can sit here. I'm John.
Morning.
I'm Mr. Lambert.
One job.
I sit here, I'll sit. I'll let this seat. Do we have, okay, that's just the agenda.
Yeah.
Yeah. No, it, it's pretty simple, uh, why I'm here. Um, Bonnie proposed a, a Great Outdoors Day, um, for kids mainly, um, and then the commissioners thought that it fit my job description, uh, better than hers, so I've pretty much taken over coordination of that and getting everything together. And, uh, I could say that word again, Monizuma Land Conservancy got a grant, call, and they've formed a group. It's a, the separate group called the Monizuma Inspire Coalition. And, uh, their purpose is to mainly educate kids about the outdoors, and to get kids more involved with, with, uh, with outdoor activities. And they've got, um, funding through this grant. I think it's, it's a huge amount of money. And, um, just, just to kinda give you, uh, an update on that, we've been having meetings and discussing it. And they really, um, they really would like to be a part of this project as long as the, the Board of County Commissioners is, is okay with it. And they would support it with, with funds and re- and resources that a lot of us don't have.
When you say they, are you talking about GOCO?
I think that's where the grant. Have you, you heard the, I think it, yeah, I think it did come from, from GOCO. But I'm honestly not sure. You know, it may, it may not have been. Oh, okay. I know it's, it's been in the paper. But we've got, um, a number of organizations that were thinking of, uh, being involved with that. And, uh, we could show, then a number of sponsors as well. So I'm just gonna give you an update. I know Commissioner Supla was more, more interested in this. So, next Monday, hopefully, um, Jay Moser, Amy McAlpin can be here and answer questions that you might have about the Monizuma Inspire Coalition. Some kind of activity. We're talking about, um, kid activities. There's a fishing derby, um, that we'll do with Tribe Unlimited. There's also games, and, and there are like three-legged races, and, you know, outdoor stuff, maybe something around, around weeds. Just to get kids more, more interested in, in the outdoor. The Cortez, City of Cortez Parks and Recreation, uh, is very, also very much interested in being a part of this. They're willing for, um, the group to use the, the main park over there by the rec center. So that's maybe where, where it's gonna be, by the big pond there. I think the fishing derby will be the place, I hope it can take place in that. Things like that. Also want to have prizes. One day thing, or just? Just a, yeah, just a one day thing. We're thinking ten in the morning to maybe two or three in the afternoon. And, uh, the sponsors, some, some have been approached, and, uh, some having sponsors include, uh, Cocopelli, Alpaca Rafts, Colorado Love Outdoors, Goods for the Woods, Summit Shooting, Shooter's Will, Cortez Rifle and Pistol Club. And that reminds me, we have, uh, we have a very large archery, um, in a group in four H. And so we want, we would also like to have some archery demonstration too, and have some, have some kids try out archery. Shooting is possible too, maybe with air pistols or something like that. We do have a shooting range, uh, for kids, that's just little, little pellet pistols. Um, we, we could put that up too. Um, IFA, Big R, Slavens, Fun Center, VisiHit Bike, Doc's Rental, and, and a couple of others. Um, the main people involved so far with this has been myself, the, the Cortez, uh, Lex and Rick, and, and Monizuma Inspire, and, since, the Gabby's from the Sam, I'm not. Other groups, and it is probably too many for me to, to, to name, so if you wanna look at those. Still, um, obviously, Commissioner Supla was objected to some of the groups being involved, and we don't, we don't wanna cause any ripples or waves, so those groups are not involved. But if there are other, any others there, that, I think should not be involved, you know, because there's plenty of opportunities, plenty of opportunities.
You said, you said they got a grant to do this?
This is, yeah, part, their grant is, is mainly to encourage kids to get outdoors. Now, they, they collect, bef- before they got this grant, they collected a lot of data and surveys about kids at Monizuma County. And they, they found out, and that, and this is supported by their research and data, that kids, you know, mainly through their parents and their family, are very much involved in outdoor activities. Um, up until about middle school. And then middle school, it starts to drop off, as they get involved in other things. They have their cell phones, you know, they have, you know, online stuff. And, and so the kids are more attached to this virtual stuff rather than the real thing, getting out there and really experiencing what's out there. And, and the, the drop was really quite dramatic, Jason, uh, shared some of those numbers with me. And I'm all for that too, I'm an outdoor person as well.
So they're gonna target the older kids for this thing?
They're gonna target middle school, mainly, mainly, yeah, mainly target middle school, because that's where the transition seems to happen, is in middle school. Before that, you know, and, and I know, you know, families go camping, you know, I went camping with my parents when I was a little kid, and I loved it. And that, that experience really stayed with me for the rest of my life. I, I didn't have video and internet and stuff like that when I was younger, fortunately, but we're finding that that's being, uh, that's being a big impact, a big impact on kids. And especially here, you know, where, you know, outdoors is just part of our life here.
It's like a one day thing.
Yeah.
The route to go, everything, it's fun to hike.
Yeah, this is, this is only one event, I'm sure, because their, their grant is over a million dollars. So, uh, it's, and it's a multi-year thing. I think it's three, for three or four years. No, 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 that would only be partial, only part of those funds. You know, probably a small part, I wouldn't think would be very much. Uh, they hired, they recently hired the coordinator for, um, for this, um, for this outdoor activities, um, program, because it's gonna go many years, and I'm sure there could be other things that they're gonna be involved in. Jay? Yeah, yeah, this, this will probably be like their kickoff event. Because they're, they just hired their coordinator for this program, Amy, Amy McAlpin. And, uh.
She used to be at City's.
Yeah, 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 she was, yeah, she was Amy Fair. I think most of us knew her, knew her as that. And she's, so she's just getting started. But, but again, you know, we're hoping that. Next Monday, Commissioner Supla can be here along with, with you, Commissioner, uh, Commissioner Lambert, so that Jay and Amy can both be here and answer, answer the questions about this. I'm just here to just give you an update, give you a little heads up about what's going on, so you're better prepared for next Monday as well. Is that it? Okay, well, thank you very much, Susan. And then, you know, we, when we could schedule Monday, um, Melissa will, that's not, that's also a big day for Ag Expo, and I'm very involved with that. But I think I could prob, I'll be at the Fairgrounds all day. I could probably break away if you'd like me to come here for the meeting and then just come back. Thank you.
He said, he said, I said, we're early and everybody ran.
Everybody. Good morning.
Good morning, guys, today. Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Morning.
Morning, Bobby.
How are you?
Morning, Dave.
Morning, John.
So, we're talking about our WIC resource van. I had come over and told you guys that we had gotten this grant a ways back, but now we're at the point where we purchased the van. So we've done some research, and we have three options. So that's what we're here to talk about, so three options.
And I'm, I'm happy to do that if you want me to.
Yeah, okay. I'm like, sure. And this is Delilah. Delilah is the coordinator for the WIC program, and then she's also in charge of the WIC, this resource van.
So what is the van gonna do? Tell us about, about what the van will work.
Okay, so we're gonna be targeting low-income population that has a hard time getting to the WIC office, so we're gonna be. So we're gonna be taking the WIC van out and hopefully it's gonna be a resource van. We can maybe take other resources with us to maybe Medicaid, to get them signed up for Medicaid. Maybe Nurse, Nurse Family Partnership.
You're working on your resources, your food resources as well?
Yes, food resources too. Um, I've talked to a couple of different farm development programs and they said that they'd be willing to even send a cooler with fresh fruits and vegetables with us too. So then when they come to sign up for their, the WIC program, they can get fresh fruits and vegetables. And I'm working right now with the state WIC office to try to get, um. They're, they're running some different machines trying to figure out if they can run our WIC card so that they can purchase fruits and vegetables from, from a fruit and vegetable van that would come along behind us. So, so we're working on a lot of things. I'm trying to make some partners right now.
And the bottom line is we have about six hundred and some folks that are on WIC right now. But there's a potential of four thousand.
The state says that there's four thousand.
In our community who are not accessing.
That could access it, but we're.
They said the same thing about, uh, food stamps too. They said there are only fifty percent of our.
Yes.
People that are eligible are being served by it. I'm gonna tell you, a million dollars a month in food stamps is just untenable for me. That's just untenable.
But there's, you know, in those families are.
Four thousand people in our county that should qualify for women, infant, children assistance?
Yeah.
And there's a lot of work going on in the community right now as far as like collective impact, um, movement. Where they were trying, everybody's brainstorming to figure out how we get this food to these families. And one of the things that came up in this meeting that we had recently was a mobile unit, which we happened to already had written the grant for. So there's gonna be a lot of collaboration to try to meet the need of this community that's not being met right now. And there's a lot of people that are partnering to, and there are a lot of reasons that people don't access it. You know, transportation is one of them, one of the main reasons, so.
Because of all of the different reasons that they don't access the food, it's causing a lot of food insecurities in families.
Right.
They don't have, they don't have enough food for their families every day, so.
So the children are going to school with hungry stomachs. And that only takes care of the school year also, what happens in the summer when those children don't have food. So there's a lot of, um, unmet need right now. And some families are working two and three jobs. So it's hard to get their families to the churches to get the lunches. You know, there's so many different reasons that people are not accessing things, so.
So will this, will this van run on non-traditional hours? I mean, TVs or?
We don't really know. That's one of the things that has come up in our brainstorming discussions. And we're actually going to another one on Friday this week to talk more about it. Because part of it is, you know, when people are working, they're not available to come in for a lunch. So that is one of the issues, roadblocks that people hit, so, yeah. So anyway, that's why we got this van and now we have three options that we're looking at.
And one more thing I'd like to say, WIC is a nutrition education program. It's not just that we give food. We educate on how to use the food and what foods are best for your child to be eating or, or as a pregnant woman to be eating.
And cooking the food is also an issue. Some of these folks need help, you know.
Preparing it.
They, they don't know what to do with a bag of beans, you know, so it's an education issue.
You can't eat them raw.
You have to prepare it, you know.
That's when dental comes in.
So anyway.
Yeah. So, so then we were tasked with, um, figuring out what kind of van we want, which has been a, a lesson in itself because I never had to quote-unquote "design" a clinical type of a van. So, and, um, we did speak with Clint in the beginning. It's not something that he does. It's something that we needed to do on our own, which we were totally fine with. So we started locally just to see what was out there. And so our options, so you, so all of these are transit-style vans. So the ones, the high roofs that you can actually get in, stand up. Lots of different prices, lots of different logistics in getting the vans. The first option is option one and it comes from Kazim Motor. We loved this van. We thought it was a great price. The problem is, there were two issues. Um, we would have to wait five months after ordering to receive the van. Because they, it's not something that they carry on the lot. It's something that has to be ordered from a plant. Then the second issue that we had is you have to take all of the seats, the eight seats that it comes with. You have to remove them. So we researched, can you like make a little bench seat with two or three? Maybe one in the back somewhere where somebody could sit with their little, do an intake, visit with the client? Well, what, what you have to do is rip all that stuff out. There's no guarantee that those seats could be safely re-secured, um, in the van. And you have to rip the carpet out and have a bare shell basically so that you could build this. Building this is a whole nother issue, so. So then we went with option number two. Option number two is Durango Motor Companies. This one is a little more expensive. Um, this is a shell. There's nothing in there. It allows for customization. And then there's all the other stuff that you have to keep in mind is the, um, the inverters. So you can run a, um, laptop off, off of it and be able to not lose your battery 'cause you don't want that to be happening out there. We, I actually went, um, to Durango and looked at this on my own time just to see because I wanted to visually see one. This is the only one in this area that I could find to visually see other than Farmington, Albuquerque. So then we went to, um, option three, which is, um, Performance Ford Lincoln. They are not just in Salt Lake. This is the cheapest one. There are some in Phoenix, Denver. But this one in Salt Lake was the cheaper one. However, we don't get to see it in person. Kind of one of those things. Um, and we have to travel, two people to travel and get, and come back with the van. We just, I, in my personal time, I just don't, and, and my work time, I don't have time to do that. So we are leaning towards option number two.
What was the price of number three?
Thirty-three thousand, same as, so we're talking, what, uh, two thousand dollars?
Yeah, just right under two, right under two. And, and let me start with saying the grant, when we, when the grant was written, we were, we are awarded sixty-two thousand, five hundred dollars for this grant. When it was written, the estimate, the estimate for the van was at forty-five thousand. So we're already kinda right there. And that includes the clinical piece, which is the other thing. When you don't see these things in person, so what we did was we were able to take pictures, send those pictures to a person that has agreed to help us with this. He does this. He's local. He's, um, created these vans before, which is awesome. And he's guessing max five thousand dollars, but he's thinking more like thirty-five hundred for. But to get it set up. Cause you're gonna, right, you're gonna be able to pull both doors open. We'll park, we'll cone off type of a thing. We'll have our little advertise, advertiser there basically, our banner. Then we will intake people into one side because we have to get weight and measurement of children and pregnant moms. And then come inside where there's privacy and move on from there and then they can exit the other way while maybe somebody's doing that. Then we'll, you know, possibly have some tables out there with some of our other resources from the health department or anybody we decide to, that can collaborate with us. So you kinda gotta have this visual and you gotta talk, this, this gentleman, he, he was great. And he was like, okay, do you want this, this and that? And he's gonna set, be able to set it all up. Cover, the floor's already covered with class, like the rubber matting where you can keep it clean. And then what?
They go out the back door?
No, they'll go out the other door, the side doors.
The one door has two doors, has a door on each side, which makes it nice, an entrance and an exit.
On one side of the car?
Uh, one on each side.
Yeah, on the van. Yeah, it's actually pretty, pretty interesting.
Not all three of those options have that. One, one of the options have that.
It, it's a safety thing too. And then we'll also put a bar on there so that when they're exiting, that they can safely exit the vehicle. There's all the stuff we have to think about. So we're, you know, with option two, we're still right there at that price, probably under. And what we'll be able to do is be able to use the rest of the money to grow that, that little resource van. It's, it's gonna be about two years. It's a two-year grant that started on October first, I think.
Yeah.
October first.
And this hasn't, no one else around the state.
Yeah.
We're kinda groundbreakers with this 'cause no one else around the state has this van. This is a brand new thing, so we're pretty much excited to see how we do this. So it's not like we can reference somebody else and kind of tap into their knowledge 'cause no one else has done this, so.
It's taken a lot of calling around and trying to figure this out, you know. Calling, I don't know, I think the last person we talked to was in Lincoln, Nebraska. And they had like this mobile desk unit. Well, it's, it, it doesn't work. So, you know, we're out there in the hallway taping off the, the measurements of the van and then taping off how much room we would have if we had this desk that costs fourteen hundred dollars. And then we gotta find somebody to install the darn thing. It's just been a learning experience, but we'll get there. We'll get there. So what we are wanting is to be able to move forward with option number two. Number one, and, and that's the thirty-six thousand dollar one. They will take the taxes off. He even said he would probably deliver it to us if we wanted to from Durango. But it's, um, it's the one, it's the option that will work best for us because it's already shelled out. We, the gentleman who's going to help us design it can just bolt stuff to it and create our little clinic area.
And none of this, this funding is county dollars. This is a grant that we applied for and the money is sitting there in our public health.
Colorado Health Foundation.
No, for now, we're, Delilah is in, for now.
Yeah.
She sort of has that fear in the headlights.
I mean, it, it could, it's, it could grow and that might be something in the future. I don't know. But right now it's just mainly trying to, um, yeah, outreach to those four thousand people and gather our own numbers, you know. See what we see as the people in this community.
Oh, when they say that there's not many people that aren't using the services, where do they think they are? I mean.
That's the next step. Um, they have some sort of program that they can, they have it already mapped out.
Right.
And, um, I mean, I.
It's based on income level and it's done through basically GIS that they can map out where. So you're going past the house?
No, no.
Sections to sections.
Yeah, neighborhoods to neighborhoods, maybe even like libraries and, you know, you know, in the summer.
Or just being on the side of the road if the cable's off there.
Right, no.
Yep.
You might be.
Well, hopefully not on the side of the road. But just.
So what happens in five years when this van's all out? And you've got two hundred thousand miles on it? And, um, you say, man, we need another van.
Hopefully we can write another grant for it.
Kind of what we did in the first place to get the van.
Yeah.
Was applying for grant monies to, to fund it, so.
It's definitely been a learning experience.
Yeah.
So what our ask of you guys is to let us know which one of these you think we can go with. That's kind of what we're, what we're here for.
This one is here in stock and it's, um, and we've been able to visually take pictures of the inside. I took a tape measure and measured everything and was able to figure it out.
Is this the same as the Ford van that's up in Salt Lake? Only it's just here, they're both Fords and they're pretty much the same, aren't they?
I think, I think the only one in Salt Lake doesn't have the other door. It doesn't, yeah. So it doesn't have a pass-through, yeah. And then you've kinda think about all the, the long wheelbase, the, all these drive trains. And I'm thinking, you know, I'm like constantly going, my husband wants this. And then, you know, trying to figure out, some of them have some, some of them don't.
Are they all wheel-drive vehicles?
Yeah, um, I know it's not for.
Saw one, it was two-wheel drive.
Yeah, no.
Rear-wheel drive.
This one is rear-wheel drive.
Yeah. And of course, if, you know, that's the other thing is you have salesmen trying to get you to buy, spend another ten grand to get the four-wheel drive. Well, we're kinda like, okay, well, if it's snowing and it's really ugly out there, we're not going.
Not mandated to take it out or?
Right. So. And then what, what, what we're hoping is the gentleman who, um, is going to help us design this and do, do this, he'll be back around the first of April, um, and hopefully be able to get started on that piece of it.
And he said it wouldn't take a whole lot, long time to do it, maybe a month.
So you hope to have this up and running by, what, May or somewhere around there?
Yeah, summer.
Anyway, this is gonna generate any revenue for the health department?
I don't think so.
No. Um, but even if, even if we do, are able to use it for other programs, any revenue that it generates is basically on paper a cost of using it. You know, it's not like revenue, you know, it's, it's more paying the mileage reimbursement. So, um, like for instance, Nurse Family Partnership, if we use it to go out and about and try to increase enrollment for NFP, we can submit the mileage to NFP. Cindy's program, the cholesterol program, which is a free program, we don't charge for that. But we do get reimbursed mileage for that, so we could, we could get our mileage reimbursed if we used it to, to go out into communities and test cholesterol for folks and do the application fees for that. So I see it covering itself. I don't see it, I mean, we're not gonna be doing dental out in the field. No, um, not through this vehicle, no. So, and that's kind of our only real program that produces any revenue, so.
It's more about outreach.
And serving the community, serving the need of the community, which is what public health is all about. So I mean, preferably it's not a flop, but if, if it is a flop in a couple of years and we feel, we'll say, hey, it's too much trouble to try to figure it out. Well, the wind blows and all our papers, when we try to put our cable up, you know, I mean, think of, I think of the last week. We'd never cut papers on anything.
And I just think it was. Well, and most of our work's going to be inside the van for, for WIC. I mean, we can be outside, but for the most part, we're gonna be inside, so we can always shut the doors if we need to and.
Right. And there's one family at a time in that van for HIPAA, for privacy reasons. So, you know, you're, you're, both doors aren't gonna be wide open with paper blowing through, you know what I mean? The doors are gonna be closed, you do your thing and then they step out and then the next one steps in, kind of thing, you know, so.
And the state has been very supportive because we are the only ones, um, in the state that is doing this other than another county. She got a, um, like a motor home. But we decided not to go that route because someone's gotta empty that stuff. Someone's gotta winterize it. You don't wanna have water sitting in the lines and we were like, we don't, we don't wanna do that. But she's actually doing a clinic, well-child clinic out of it. And, um, so, so really they are two separate things. And they've been very supportive with us with their numbers, what, what we're gonna do, you know, they want us to be successful, so hopefully.
How many, how many people do you say is on WIC now?
Right now, I've got January's numbers 'cause that's our most recent numbers. And our grand total that was enrolled in the WIC program was six hundred and twenty-eight.
If you look back past, I'm trying to remember the slide that came up, I think it was past five years, our WIC enrollment has been going down and down and down and down.
The state of Colorado has seen a decrease. Yeah.
But it's, but that is a definite trend going down for the past five years. So that's partly why we got funded for this because there's more to see. It's not that there's not a need, it's that we're not tapping into that population for some reason, so that's what we're trying to do.
Well, and, and after two years, the van is, um, no longer part of that grant. And so technically we will own it and we can figure out what to do then. If we don't wanna continue, we have the choice to sell the van or, you know, some, it, it, they're not gonna really have a say after two years. But hopefully we'll still be able to use it.
A lot of our community partners that know about this are very excited about it too 'cause they're interested in partnering with us. So I think that that's going to, I, I, I see it as being successful. I do, I think it's gonna be successful.
Okay, yes, we'll see.
So what's your vote? Which one of these are we gonna get to buy?
Pay their money.
Okay, then we go with number two, right?
Yeah, we'd like, we'd like number two, just because it's here.
This is money that's come from the state of Colorado or whatever your grant funding source is, so.
Colorado Health Foundation.
I, I mean, I don't see where, I don't see where I have to tell you. Just, uh, just good luck with this.
Okay, we'll keep you posted on our progress. Okay, we'll keep you posted on our progress and how it's growing.
See if those numbers, see if, see if those numbers go up, and if they do, you're doing the right thing, so.
Do a demonstration, I mean, part's not going to.
All right.
It might be a good place.
I think you should still do a motion, just authorizing them to make their decision, use their discretion on it.
I will move that the, uh, Monzuma County Health Department, uh, take option two of the three presented to us, and that is for the purchase of a van for their WIC program in the amount of thirty-six thousand eight hundred and fourteen dollars and ninety-five cents.
Thank you. Yes, thank you.
I'll second. It may move, and second, to approve the health department purchasing the van for the WIC program for thirty-six thousand eight hundred and fourteen ninety-five. All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Well, we'll respect the demonstration.
Okay.
Come, come by and sign us out.
Once we get all the remodel done.
Yeah, oh yeah, now you got to get it, you got to get it overhauled. Hey, Clint? Join these ladies?
Uh, we did get an email.
Yeah.
Okay, basically, this is, uh, for a Equinox, for the health department. It'll be purchased and bought by the county. Um, we had, as savings from the county for them last year, came out to on your second page, was twenty-two eight ninety-two, we're going to do about three hundred and fifty over that.
That was the money that they had put in for the-
Yeah, put in for all the ones previous, and listen, you guys have set up.
Right.
And it's going to zero that balance out from two thousand seventeen to eighteen, but that will be money that was saved through the county. Like I said, we'll have come up off the mileage for three hundred and eighty-two dollars, I think, all that's left on this, to pay for this vehicle. Yeah, it won't take very long, it's your fifty-one cents and, and what we've got. Um, you look at the front invoices, from Ron Risner, that's, uh, Risner, I'm sorry. Um, it's only five hundred over what, uh, what it is for government pricing. Um, so it'll be coming into Durango, won't be any pickup here, anything will be delivered. Your total price is twenty-three thousand one hundred and ninety-eight eighty. Um, the Equinoxes are running about thirty-two to forty miles a gallon, sometimes less, sometimes more. It is something they can get people in, which is going to also create less mileage and then fuel cost.
Are we getting rid of any of the, uh, the-
Yes, I've got to sit down with Bobby and then-
The Dodge Durango.
And that'll help them to start upgrading. This is what you guys set, set to do two or three years ago.
Reduction and upgrade.
This is your first one, you guys have got the money the county has to actually be ahead, and to purchase the vehicles they're supposed to purchase.
What are you going to do with that Dodge?
Sell it.
Yeah, you know, where, Rob?
Um, I kind of be honest with you, with, with the, uh, the super auction, I like to set them here, because it gives, the community had a very good talk-up on it. Yeah, because it actually goes back into our community that paid for the vehicle, for our people in the community to actually get a chance to purchase the vehicle. People out in the community seem to really like that, I think chasing it to sell it somewhere else is, is just more work to do.
I think super auctions has offered, at least Larry Don did last year, to take-
This was not one of those problems, it was a care.
Yeah, and Larry Don last year, he made nothing off it, no, that was, that was the way it was set up. Still had to pay the auctioneer, that was it, but that was a separate feat. And we'll do the same this year, and like I said, I, we got decent money out of everything last year, the community was happy, and that's where we should go, I, I believe.
So the, when the Durango is sold, that money goes into fleet, correct?
Mm-hmm, yeah. Yeah, it'll go back in and go toward that, toward new purchase of vehicles, is where that money will go.
Okay.
Twenty-two came from-
Cut out of your dollar that came out of the county-funded money that was put into your department, so it's actually- County money that we used, not health department money.
No.
Not, but I'm understanding, so okay, then we got to-
It's okay.
We're now that it's fifty-one cents instead of, what was it previous?
Eleven.
Eleven.
Well.
So it's, basically, it's the difference between eleven and the fifty-one.
Okay, that's where you're coming up with that, okay, I might misunderstand on that, I apologize for that one, man. So, and-
We're glad to get rid of this one.
I, I believe so, too, um, like I said, we'll, we'll just absorb the over, receive vehicles that are coming in to, to make it better for all the way around, for, for the cost and, and the mileage, which I came up with, and your guys' isn't that bad for mileage, but you'd be convinced you're making it more feasible for you guys, so.
I will move that the purchase of a two thousand eighteen Chevy Equinox by the Monzuma County Health Department-
Fleet Department.
Fleet Department, excuse me, Monzuma County Fleet Department, for the purchase price of twenty-three thousand one hundred and ninety-eight dollars and eighty cents, be approved. Booked through from- From, uh, Morehart, Morehart Murphy Auto Center. It's a state bid, this is a state bid car in-
State bid car, basically, yes, we're just buying it at a local department, that's good, or a local place, that is going to be in the same price.
It's been moved, seconded to, uh, purchase a Chevrolet Equinox from Morehart Murphy, uh, Auto Center, for the Fleet Department, for a total of twenty-three thousand one hundred and ninety-eight eighty. All in favor?
Aye.
Very quickly, that's what I called it, it's in Ron's email this morning, I'm waiting for an answer from Ron. So I can't be an answer, I was up here for a second.
Thank you.
I forget it.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bob.
Thank you. Thank you, guys.
Nope, that's all I have, is the, uh, James, just take two.
So this is for moving out?
They, they all have, uh, partial headquarters to Grand Junction.
And I've got a, uh, Cleveland copy here, in case anyone wants to sign that. Paid a hundred and one today, but they'll, they'll take what I'm asking you to do.
Yes, indeed. Yeah, I think you made a, you made a good, good statement, what you're saying. I would, I would move that the letter from the Board of Monzuma County Commissioners dated April third. April third?
May, who does have the date?
You can, um, I never had that changed, March, Mark.
March fifth.
You can go ahead and sign it, I'll just put the-
Well, it's, it's right here.
Oh, it is, oh, I copied it, I made that correct.
Uh, dated March fifth, two thousand eighteen, to Secretary of the Interior Ryan Zinke?
I think he has a knee on his last- Yes, I corrected that as well.
Okay, good. Uh, demonstrating Monzuma County support for the relocation of the BLM, uh, federal headquarters to Grand Junction, Colorado, or, and/or the west coast of Colorado.
Second.
Been moved, and seconded, to approve a letter to Secretary of the Interior Ryan Zinke, run by Monzuma County Board of Commissioners, in support of relocating the Bureau of Land Management National Headquarters, Grand Junction, or, if you had, turn one of the other western states. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm trying to get a color, uh, cover page.
Okay.
Yeah. Yes, that would be that. Uh, well, actually, this could be the same on Friday. Okay, um, so I just, just got this, uh, this message in on Friday, of course, I was out of town, so I just got it this morning. But the, uh, the Rico West of Morris objection meeting has been changed, and they're moving that to Tuesday, tomorrow, uh, from ten to one. So I guess when we, oh, you're going to have to move fast enough sometimes, we can't get it back at us. But, uh, so Keenan, I don't know if you have time to, uh, participate in that. I, I will be here, and so we'll certainly participate, reiterate everything we said the first time, but if any commissioners can make it. And, uh, okay, so we are, um, so we're at, so we're the third in line, so it'll probably, kind of like it was the last time, they'll give us, uh, everybody, you know, five, ten minutes or something. So we're probably looking at, um, you know, probably twenty or thirty minutes into the meeting before we get to do our, um, purpose. So, uh, we did get, um, a chartered proposal, or, maybe it's a conference.
Oh, okay.
And so we'll just, uh, that's what I'll do, to my office, we'll probably do the same. Uh, I did get a call from the San Juan Trail Riders, they sent us their, uh, resolution proposal. Um, the Forest Service sent us their resolution proposal, so we're kind of counter, looking at both of them. My understanding is that the, uh, Backcountry Hunters and Anglers, uh, is, uh, maybe with some, anyway, there's another, the other side, basically, that it also has, you know, submitted, uh, a proposal for a resolution. There sounded like it was, uh, you know, certainly more restricted than even what the Forest Service had presented in their, their proposal. I have not got a copy of that, um, since all this stuff is kind of flying around right now. Um, if I can track that down, I'll forward a copy to everybody. But I guess the best thing we can do at this point, probably read these letters. I haven't had a chance to, hot off the press, I haven't had a chance to-
I read that one letter from Alan Christie with the, with the San Juan Trail Riders. And he showed the ratios of how much they're, how much they're losing, and, and relative ratios to, to motorized trails, and how much it's, it, uh, I think we need to make that very evident to the Forest Service, that they're really just, it's gone from, from the two-point-three to one to a four-point, four to one, and, uh, they're, they're reducing, they're reducing the number of open, traveling trails and stuff, and motorized vehicles, they're just keep chopping it down, chopping it down, you know, but.
You sort of get a sense about it, we had, had part of that conversation today, it was, I mean, he was pointing out that the Forest Service, when they read off in their, uh, in their plan, they're, they're talking about how they're, they managed to reduce motorized by thirty percent.
Mm-hmm.
Well, it's kind of, I mean, you're sort of, sort of reading between the lines of what they're really doing there. And, I mean, if they were smart about it, they would have said, you know, hey, we, we managed to save seventy percent, instead of saying, hey, we managed to get rid of thirty, thirty, yeah. Because you can sort of see where this thing's stacking up, and, and, uh, you know, it doesn't-
I'll tell you what, with this, you know, and I, and I reiterated that in our last meeting, and you may bring it up again, but where they're going to go in this pine kill, and this beetle kill up there, and they're going to have Montrose Timber come in and start logging all of this, and they're going to build roads, and they're going to open that, kind of, a lot of that country up that, that they need to make, have those roads built, for those to remain and, and have, use those for access roads, access trails. They're going to be having logging trucks and scanners and everything else up in there, and it's part of their, how do we save our forest, and, and by, by going in and harvesting, rather than, uh, sit there and get bug killed and die of old age. And, um, I think they need to really be cognizant, that they need to take whatever they do up there, and that, not all of it, but, but take and select, and, and weed out good roads and trails up into that, into that country, that Popoers and pineirs.
Yeah, the ones where we can make logical connections, make line roads, and things like that. Okay, well, sure, uh, I can reiterate that, but I want to make sure all the commissioners at least have a, you know, a copy of what is, uh, being sent. And I have, have emailed this around to everybody. And again, with more information, I'll send more in, we don't have a lot of time to kind of review it, and everything's at the cost, I don't know, but, yeah. I, I think we feel pretty, uh, pretty confident in everything we've said in the past, and we're just going to reiterate it now, if you don't mind. And, and so, uh, the SJPR is, of course, the San Juan Trail Rider, the other one is the Forest Service proposal. Uh, it does sort of sound like, um, what the San Juan Trail Riders, um, are proposing, um, is, I think the big one is the Calico Trail, it sounds like they're willing to give up and want into that trail, which is a lot of, that's, that's been over. Um, but they would like to see, um, you know, everything further south from that.
The Royal and all that, so still, still, still available, though.
Sure.
And Bear Creek and all that, the stuff that's already there.
Mm-hmm. I think they are suggesting maybe a, a couple of connections that can be made. I think their objective is to keep, you know, what they're willing to give up, they just like to keep the same number of miles.
Mm-hmm.
So they're just looking for a place, a place, or a place, in a place that everybody feels like they're going to get free on, when they're there. Uh, they had a little bit of a heartache over the Ryan Creek Trail, I mean, they're, yeah. They're, they're happy that it's come back, and they're not into the motorized, uh, realm, because that's what Forest Service is proposing, but what they're kind of pointing out, is that all along, the Forest Service has been saying, hey, oh, never work on Ryan Creek. All these long-listed reasons, um, suddenly evaporate.
Now here it is.
Yeah, so, I think you're kind of worried, worried low that I'm-
They were talking about the water and all that, and, you know, they had a, this whole litany of stuff, why that would never work, and now they're saying, now they say it's okay, yeah.
So I think I've never been really determined of how to, I've never seen them calculate how much initial sediment loading and things like that. And they say they're sediment loading, they say they're downcutting, I mean, there's sediment loading and downcutting at all.
Everywhere.
Everywhere, yeah. Um, but, you know, they make, they make it sound, you know, Grand Canyon there, and, and obviously, over forty, fifty years of use, um, we have- Um, certainly evidence of use, but a lot of that's really fact, there's more people, um, using it, so you're always going to have that on all these trails, um, even foot trails, you know. Anyway, it just, you know, it's troubling, but we can't seem to kind of really figure out the whole science behind it, and it sort of feels like the science is being, you know, diluted.
Yeah, what you want the science to say.
Correct, yeah.
Well, I'll try and be there with that, I'm not guaranteeing I'll be there, but I'll certainly try.
And, uh, Commissioner Limerick, if you'd like to be there, that's wonderful, it's, it's conference call, and- It, uh, and Keenan and I didn't, didn't last the whole meeting the last time, because I mean, I'm like, this is one, or ten, or one, or three, and it was, you know, beyond that, that, this long, so. So, okay, I guess that's, uh, I guess from my, um, I think I also had one, um, that we talked about the DLM meeting last week, I did give, uh, I went to the, um, uh, I went to this busy, the city council, and I kind of gave them a big, and we were out the trail, and trying to keep going, and we did the same thing for the anxious, uh, about a month or so ago, so, anything? Well, I think the city's all, all, you know, on the same page with the county, um, but how to actually make an offer on that property, and have the cash in hand, that's, that's difficult, but, uh, we're, you know, they'll, they'll offer upwards, what they can do as well, so, you know, got to talk to these folks, so.
But there is no, no way ready to let, uh, these go across there, or?
Well, you know, I wouldn't say that, it's just been so difficult to have a conversation with them.
With all of them?
All twelve of them, so we got one point person, but they have just not been very responsive. You know, for example, Catherine Calder, um, got a hold of her again last week, I've tried her multiple times, she couldn't even remember why Catherine was talking to her.
Oh, God.
Um, apparently, they're just not taking it very seriously.
Yeah.
But we're just going to keep trying, you know, and, um, you know, at some point, you're going to have to pull the trigger, but I think we'll just keep trying until we, we get the proof of the point.
So moving ahead on the fluid project?
Yeah, yes, uh, yes, and so the fluid, uh, they're out there working on it, um, did some preliminary work today, so, um, they'll, they'll be out there probably, you know, obviously, for the next few months after that kind of stuff, so. Okay, I guess that's, that's it for me today. Anything else from the commissioners?
I don't know where, not right now.
Okay, very good. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thanks, Dan.
I don't have anything, other than I wanted to do that executive, uh, session with you all. Um, it's under subsection B, and-
Where is your public comment section?
Oh, of course.
Open it up for public comment.
And let me just, um, before you make the motion, just remind you about the issues to include in that. Um, the main thing I want to talk to you all about are legal matters regarding County Road Forty-One. Just as a side note, really for the public, we, Rob and I met with their attorney, uh, last week, um, with, with one of the property owners- Just as a side note, really for the public, we, Rob and I met with their attorney, uh, last week, um, with, with one of the property owner's attorneys last week. And I kind of want to bring you up to date on, up to speed on what's going on out there. Then I just, I want to see if you guys have any questions about Kinder Morgan, what's going on with that, I don't really have a lot to update you on. Um, there is a social services issue that, um, we've been dealing with, a legal matter that I want to update you guys on, see if you have any questions on. Oh, and then also, see if you have any questions on, so our remodel next door, we had some, um, just call it employee concerns about, uh, ADA accessibility. I think we've got, everything's moved over, um, but I feel like I should fill you in on it. Not that I need to do an executive session unless you guys have, have questions, they, I'd say, I think it was last week. What was the woman's name that we spoke with in DC from Tipton's office, she contacted me just asking progress. Uh, I said, no new updates, um, that the US Forest Service would, you know, has our proposed agreement, they said they were going to put it on their, in their format, get it back to us. And, but we hadn't heard anything back yet, and so then I shot an email to, to Derek Padilla. He told me that they would, uh, have it for us, not this month, but by the April meeting. That's about it, if you guys have questions that you think we should do an executive session, we can throw that in there too, but.
Okay, I would move that we go into executive session for a conference with the attorney for the purpose of receiving legal advice on specific legal questions under CRS. Section twenty-four dash six dash four oh two, parentheses for the.
And Morgan include.
Approve Rob, our road department supervisor.
Just for the road stuff.
Kim Purcell, uh, Senator, the administrator, Attorney Baxter, and Commissioner Zerkell and Lambert. To discuss County Road Forty-One, project, Kinder Morgan, social services, and a possible ADA discussion on our remodel. Executive session for a conference with the attorney for the purpose of receiving legal advice on specific legal questions under CRS, section twenty-four dash six dash four oh two, four B. Road twenty-one, Kinder Morgan.
Forty-one, forty-one, road forty-one.
Forty-one, I'm sorry, yeah.
I'm afraid we're going to kick you out, Rob, as soon as we do the.